Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask for is agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, we would ask that the executive sessions be put after the report section on the agenda. And actually, we will do the attorney-client before non-elected personnel if that's all right.
Everybody good with that? Okay. We'll open up for public forum at this time. There is nobody in the audience besides people that are supposed to be here, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public forum. And ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing this consent agenda as submitted, I would make a motion to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to unfinished business. Item one is public hearing for distressed property at 126 East Third Street. I'd like to open that public hearing at this time. And Ethan, you have something for us here?
Sure. Um, as was emailed all out to you, it was public on the YGAN auction website. There was a bid received on the Townsmen Motel. Reached out to Mr. Reckus for an update, and his update via email was that they did receive a bid on the Townsmen, but they felt the bid was very low. And the agency continues to negotiate the price with the bid presenter and several other interested parties, and continue to ask for the city's patience and understanding to support what he feels is his need for additional time to sort out the options he has regarding the Townsmen Motel property. So that is the update. The, we reached out to the Realtors Office as well and did not receive any, any meaningful information or update there as to where a process might be of, as far as a, you know, contract being negotiated with potential buyer or anything of that. So, all we know is that there was a bid received on the property, but whether that's gonna come to fruition is anyone's guess.
Counsel, if we proceed and if in fact Mr. Reckus is working with somebody to negotiate, do we risk exposure of ourselves, any liability proceeding, and possibly hindering his sale?
It may hinder the sale potentially if someone feels like it's subject ultimately to potential demolition. You know, just any qualified buyer, you know, with, with any due diligence might have pause if they think, "I'm buying something that may get torn down, and I have an intent to try to fix it." They have no guarantee from us because they haven't appeared before us yet, because they have no standing, to ask for additional time, although the likelihood is, many times they'll call and will say, "Well, certainly if you're gonna present with a plan and a timeframe and a budget and all those sorts of things, the city will probably, you know, consider that." You know, because you're a viable purchaser with some type of intent to clean it up, take care of it, and do what we wish to be done with this proceeding. But no, beyond that, no. That, that risk is inherent in the process. But the, you know, this is noticed up. We have a property that, based upon the report we've received, in good faith, we find to be distressed, or at least distressed enough to have started this and initiated the proceedings. If you make the determination based on the information that you've been provided, and obviously the physical appearance of the structure and everything else that's there, to go forward, then so be it. The-
Make sure we don't put ourselves in any exposure in any way.
No, I mean, I can never say that there isn't, that someone can't sue you just any time for anything, as they can.
Sure.
As a practical matter, but do I find, you know, that as a matter of experience, that that creates some undue risk on our part? No.
Okay.
I will note that Mr. Reckus did say that he had his contractor go through the building and does not feel that, or was advised by that contractor that the building does not have any safety issues that might be a danger to people outside the building, acknowledges obviously the repair needs on the exterior and the roof. And says he is trying to obtain quotes to repair those areas to keep the building, you know, a viable property to potentially sell or whatnot. I would advise, I guess, if there is question in the governing body's mind, we do have the option, obviously, to put that onus on the property owner to have it formally evaluated with a structural engineer coming in, so it's not our building inspector versus his contractor and who's actually more right than the other. And that is the draft you have there, just based on that recommendation from staff. We would probably recommend that we at least put the issue to bed of whether it's an immediate danger to the public. I think everyone's familiar with the blighting factor it has in its current state of disrepair. But as far as it actually being, you know, structurally unsafe or anything, you do have the option as part of this proceeding to put that, or ask that the property owner give, or have it formally evaluated, and then a copy of that evaluation given to the city to be entered into the record.
And we can take it, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
We can take it a step further if you wish. I did this in a template format, so that if we want to change, first of all, the timeframes, I've left that blank. And, but I did go ahead and give you an example of the language I would typically use if you're going to request that someone do something. In this case, a structural engineer comes in, is properly licensed, gives a full and written report. You can even go a step further than that, because I know that the city manager suggested that as well. I didn't put that in here yet because I wanted to see what the discussion would be, but that's an easy change to say. And, within a certain timeframe, if that's done, that you'll either undertake remedial measures and provide us with a plan for what those measures are, based upon that report, and a budget and a timeframe. And I've also left blank in here, and if you don't do any of that on a date certain, or any date thereafter, like say, we're 60 days or 90 days, that the city reserves the right then to take it down. So what you're in essence doing is putting the, the whole thing, as Ethan was just saying, the onus is on the property owner, which is where it should lie, and you can set a timeframe.
Well, counsel, if you recall, we've already given this current property owner several extensions. And in my opinion, he's had 14 years to do something with the property. At this point, I think that the general public would be behind this body, making a decision to continue to proceed to the next step and, and steps in a logical fashion, as quick as possible, to get some resolution for this.
You took the words out of my mouth.
I, I agree.
So, do we need to spell out anything on this resolution, or can we adopt it?
You know, kind of, some of the suggestions we had, Brad had left blank, we put in, you know, looking at the calendar, being acknowledgement of the holiday. Basically, it's, it's a 90-day window, but ask for that structural evaluation and the report to be sent to the city by March 13th of 2023. And then, as it was drafted, it does have that language that if it can't pass that structural, it immediately calls for demolition of the building. You know, based on that report back, if we have that, I mean, I think tonight we would pass a resolution, but still not end the public hearing, continue the public hearing. You get that report back, and then, as Brad said, I think we have a better avenue at that point to say, "Okay, it is structurally sound, but it needs remediation work as far as the blighting influence it's having." Present us a plan based on that report.
Okay.
So- So in the third paragraph there on page two, it mentions if they fail to complete the demolition in a timely manner, how, what, how do we define timely manner?
To be, and again, that's what I was trying to say earlier. If you'd like, you can set an absolute timeframe. I didn't know what you would want to use for that. Typically, I'll be candid, what most people do, if they've made the determination based on the reports we already have, and we've already opened this hearing previously, and you've, you're all aware of and cognizant of the information that was provided on the deficiencies, and you make the determination, this thing is, is at a point where it really either needs to come down, or if the property owner wishes to invest the money, it may not be good money after bad, but it's their choice, then they need to come in here with some assurances. And you can establish that deadline, and I would put that in here then. So if you pass it, it would be subject to staff revision as instructed and approval. And what usually happens on the ones that are kind of, it feels like a fait accompli kind of a thing, where nobody's gonna want to pour that money into it, 60 days is the longest, quite frankly, that a lot of cities will go. And so the 61st day or any time thereafter, we reserve the right. Doesn't mean we're gonna do it on the 61st day. We may just start taking bids then from local contractors who do that demolition work. So it could be, and then depending on their schedule, it could be 90, it could be longer. But we have the right, and we reserve it in here, to do so anytime after that initial period we've given you expires.
Would it have any value for us to insist that he have a local engineer? Obviously, the engineer who looks at this is gonna have to be licensed in the state of Kansas, but you can have anybody out of state licensed in the states. Do we want to push to have a local engineering firm?
Typically-
Of any value?
No. Well, it, it is to us because you, you can trust the opinion that you receive based on past history and knowing the individual. But to dictate that to a property owner does feel like we're probably pushing the envelope a little bit. If they are professionally licensed in this state, that should be the kind of, that's usually the minimum threshold that we can insist upon.
Which is, that's fine with me.
Sure. I do think, you know, obviously, we haven't solicited contractor bids for the roof repairs or anything of that nature, but I do think, seeing what the auction prices were for that, I mean, I believe it was 15, 15.5. That's less than, I believe the county has it appraised right around 20. And so 15.5 is a value, but I, I think, you know, there's probably at least $10,000-plus worth of repair that would be needed concerning the, the outside of the structure. And so I think that does give the city clearance or, or enough evidence, if you will, to, to support, you know, the raising language that's in there of, you know, these repairs are clearly-
More than 50%.
More than 50% of the market value of that building. We did put the March 13th as that timely manner in the next section on that, be it further resolved, just to keep with that March 13th deadline to get a report back. But to Brad's point, that obviously doesn't mean on the 14th, we're rolling in with, with dozers, so.
Well, we want a motion to approve or adopt this resolution.
Yeah, sure.
And before you do that, just to make one final comment on this, in case it wasn't noticed, I did leave wiggle room, as I always do in these. If he came in on the 59th day with all of the requisite information necessary to present a valid budget, show that he had the wherewithal to do it, he has a contractor with him and says, "We're starting in seven days," you have for good cause shown the ability at any time to extend this deadline. So you've reserved that right as well. I just want to be sure you understand, you, you're not locked in. If, if for some reason something comes up, and it looks like, okay, he really is in good faith thinking he can do this and wants to do it, and he's gone the extra mile, then you have that ability.
We do want that ability, so.
Well, if there is no more discussion or questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to adopt and approve Resolution Number 2022-14, a resolution finding that the structure located at 126 East Third Street in the city of Halsted, Harvey County, Kansas, is unsafe or dangerous, and directing that the structure be demolished and the premises be made safe and secure, along with the, the possible need for staff revision and approval to this document.
Second.
Fine. We have the motion and a second, the second, to adopt Resolution Number 2022-14. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Mr. Mayor, I would just believe to keep this open to, to the timeline established in that resolution, just calling for a motion to continue until March 13th of 2023.
Do you want to do that motion after we have this vote on this, or do you want to make it part of the motion?
Sorry, after.
Okay.
Did I call for this vote?
We voted. Oh, we voted, yeah, sorry.
My bad.
And I don't believe there's anybody else present that wants to speak on this subject as part of the public hearing. So, yeah, I'll accept that motion to continue this public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I would also make a motion to continue this, this subject at a later date.
Second.
We don't have a-
We need a-
We need-
Yeah, I would establish the March 13th.
Okay, March 13th, I'm sorry.
Of 2023.
2023. Second.
Have the motion and the second to continue this public hearing on this distressed property to March 13th, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That will be continued. Next, under unfinished business is sidewalk repairs and improvements in the library in the 200 block of Main on the east side. You got something you wanna talk about there, Ethan?
We did receive, and it was included in the packet. And we just noted that Becker Building and we, the three separate quotes, I believe that quote for the, the missing scope was 14,000. We had estimated it would be between 13 and 15 during the last meeting. That does confirm that Becker Building is the lowest quote, and that for both, just if we would do sidewalk work in front of the library, subject to their property, 13,727 would be the low bid for that from Becker, or the entirety of the work on Main Street from the south property line of 208 Main all the way to the Third Street. And that is a total of 49,497 with the options of handrails. We have talked to the property owners that still have trees. While none of them are extremely happy to see those trees go, they do understand the city's position that if we invest that kind of work, we don't want root damage to immediately start to buckle that sidewalk. Also, we did talk to Mr. Reeves, who owns the independent building. He was gonna try and get in town this week and look at the ADA ramp that is in front of 204 Main, because that is similar in style to what we would most likely want to do with the independent. Otherwise, because of the, the ramp ratio we would need, we'd be coming out pretty far towards the curb to, that makes a pretty big hump. So, he wasn't vehemently opposed, understood the need for it, thought it might help it, but he gave kind of a tentative yes, but he wanted to come and look at, at that actual ramp before he gave a, a full-throated. So he is understanding, and, and hopefully we'll hear back a positive of him. That is the one unresolved issue, if you will, which the city could still engage in the work, just not do the ramp. There were options on Becker's quote, and then that becomes an issue for Mr. Reeves to handle at his own leisure if he has any complaints on access, so. And other than that, it, it's back to whether or not the council wants to engage in this work. Did note, obviously, there is, you know, the possibility of, of setting up that expectation, at least in the mainstream, Main Street downtown corridor of, of the city engaging in these repairs, and whether that's an appropriate policy decision to take is up to all of you.
I think we've discussed it a couple times, and it seems like the consensus every time that we've talked about this is that, at least in the Main Street corridor, we need to be taking care of the sidewalks as a government project. And I still support that idea.
Anybody else?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to accept a bid from Becker Building for the sidewalk repairs for the remaining east 200 block of Main Street for a cost not to exceed $49,497.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for this sidewalk work on the east side of Main Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Well, that finishes up our unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. The first thing is a public hearing for the 2022 budget amendment. I'll open that public hearing now.
Sorry, not a lot to, to present that wasn't presented, as we talked about it last meeting when we set the public hearing, just due to gas prices being much higher than anticipated and, and originally budgeted for over the summer of 2022. That MMBTU cost, we need to reflect those higher prices. We did obviously see corresponding revenue, so this just makes that amendment and keeps us compliant with budget authority and cash basis laws.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions, I'd make a motion to adopt, and the, adopt the amended 2022 budget relating to gas revenue, revenues and expenditures for the city of Halsted. Authorizing governing body signatures on the document and to direct staff to provide the amended budget to Harvey County and the state of Kansas.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to adopt this 2022 budget amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Next item under new business is EMS grant application. And Mr. Lowe is here to talk to the council tonight. Andy, step on up there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I'm here this evening just for approval to do a grant application to the Board of EMS. This equipment we're after is a power load system. In essence, what this does is we would upgrade our cot, they would modify our ambulance. We take the cot up to the back of the ambulance. The load system actually gets a hold of the cot, raises the cot up to 700 pounds without assistance. Therefore, pulling risk of staff, how we're loading now, any patient up to 700 pounds, we would not have to manually load at this point. It also locks the cot, so it gives a major risk reduction of what they call the hook miss, cot coming out, the cot hitting the ground with a patient on it. We won't know about this grant until April 2023, when the selections are ratified by the Board of EMS. It's a 75-25 grant. The grant will only cover the power load portion. It will not cover the update to the cot or the modification to the EMS unit. And that put our price just over $10,000. We went, I went ahead, rounded it up to 11,000, told Ethan, that was kind of what I rounded to. Just because of the timeframe, I don't know what price change might occur to the cot upgrade or the install of it. I did talk to the guy that does the install. He's not foreseeing a price increase on the install. The gentleman that would do the install is the emergency vehicle technician up at Salina Fire. He is also the warranty serviceman for O-Sage ambulance, which the truck it's going in is an O-Sage unit. So they know those units very well. I asked Riker, I said, "What's it take to put this in?" And after listening to them, it's a well-spent $1,500, because you have to take a router and cut into part of the floor. And I'm not so sure I could do that straight and make it right. And then they have to ship the box to put metal plates under the floor to hold the weight of the system, and then they'll wire it in, because with this system, while the cot's in the truck, it's on the charger at all times. Other than that, I mean, I'm open to questions. I don't want to ramble specifications out. If you guys don't want to hear them, but I do have some various brochure stuff I did print out. Total project cost ballpark, again, I'm trying to forecast into April, is going to be around 32,205. The state's dedicated portion of that would be 21,715.95 if we're awarded the grant. But because it goes over the $10,000 threshold, we're here for you guys to get permission to move forward on the grant part.
So is the remaining money that's not, that's needed, not covered by the grant, is that covered in your budget?
Yes, it's in my city equipment fund.
I got a couple of questions, Andy. Are you just looking at doing this on one unit?
Yes, because we're in the process of replacement time for the other unit. This entire setup, a new cot, is already in the new unit specs.
Okay.
So this will make everything identical and interchangeable.
And that was-
This is just going to do the ambulance that we still have to keep for five to eight years yet. This is the truck it will be going in.
You answered my question. I wondered how much more service life we were gonna have on this ambulance you were putting it in, so.
Yeah, we, we've got another five to eight years on it. Like I said, we've already put it in the spec on the new truck. We've started that process already. We're just haven't reached the point to bring it to you guys yet, because even if we ordered it tonight, they're telling me now, the first quarter of '25, before we see delivery of it, so. And depending what happens with our other ambulance, it's been gone for two months. We may just have to shift gears and find out if anybody's got a demo and not go with our spec, so.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I'd make a motion to approve Director Lowe to apply for the Kansas Board of EMS Kansas Revolving and Assistance Fund Grant and acknowledgement of required matching funds.
Second. Have a motion and a second to let Andy go after this grant money. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Good luck, Andy. Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Next item on our agenda is the Williams Park annexation, and we've got an ordinance written up. You want me to pre tense that one, Ethan, or you want to do?
I'll, I'll, I'll take it, and Brad can say this is, I, I thought we were, would be ready for the ordinance itself to actually do the formal annexation. City owns this property. We basically have established by the end of year, under state statute, we're supposed to do a boundary annexation with the changeover in the city clerk's office that did not get done last year when we annexed the golf course and the land just west of Williams Park to Halsted Road. So as we were getting ready to submit that boundary update for this year, talking with the surveyor, I said, "You know, it's really interesting that Williams Park doesn't show on the county maps as being part of the city limits." He went through our last formal boundary description, confirmed that when the city took ownership of it, apparently, not sure why, that parkland was not actually formally annexed into city limits. So we have here basically two documents, the consent and the request for annexation, which the council would both need to authorize the mayor to sign. We do own all the property that is being annexed. It is contiguous. It's meets very multiple factors for unilateral annexation, in that it will make our boundaries contiguous. There's basically now a little island with the other annexation we did of Williams Park not being in city limits, so. But, but I got a little bit ahead and thought we would have, or be ready for the ordinance. We can do these two tonight, and then do the ordinance as part of our next meeting, along with that boundary update, I believe. Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. And just, this feels a little schizophrenic, and it is, because you're asking yourself to do this and approving it. But we do it that way because the statutory system doesn't really say, "Oh, but if you're the city and you own it, you don't have to do this." Basically, it's always required to do it this way, make the request. And if the property owner, and it's not a unilateral kind of a thing, by the city taking some property in, property owner comes in making that request and says, "Hey, and I consent to it," that's what these two things do. If you would like, the, I, I'm not terribly uncomfortable with it unless the, the council is. You could instruct and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance at this point, and we, I just prepare it so it would get published right away now, if you want it done a little sooner. Because these have to come in order first. The ordinance is gonna say exactly the same thing in terms of the description, and simply say that we've taken it in. And then we publish, and that's it. It doesn't have the same requirements as a unilateral, where you have to give notice, you have to do certain other things, and wait certain timeframes. That doesn't exist in this kind of an instance where we own it already, and we're the one annexing, and we wish to take it in.
So the motion doesn't want to be to, most of her approve the ordinance, we, the motion will be to move forward and submit the requests for annexation?
Yeah, to authorize the mayor to sign the request and the consent. And I would probably do those as two separate ones, so that for Julie's purposes, it's in the minutes separately.
If you're comfortable, I, it would be great to actually make the motion to approve the, the ordinance. That ordinance number would hold true, and Brad can get that done that way. We have, the ordinance has been published by the time, because next meeting, we'll actually do that formal boundary, and-
Does anybody else on council have a problem with going forward and approving the ordinance?
No.
All right. Well, with that, there's no.
There'll be three motions.
Yes.
That's what I was gonna ask you.
With that, I'd make a motion for, make a motion to approve the request for annexation of Williams Park.
And authorize the mayor's signature.
And authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to request annexation of Williams Park. All in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign. That passes.
Secondly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent for annexation for Williams Park, and also to have the mayor's signature.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent for annexation of Williams Park. All in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign. That one passes.
Thirdly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance number 1326, an ordinance annexing the land into the city of Halsted.
Second.
I kind of missed part of that motion, but. I'll just ask for the approval on George's motion and the second. All in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign. That passes. Thanks, council. Next on our agenda is 2023 holiday schedule. I'm guessing Ethan's gonna ask for time off on holidays.
There you go, sir. I, you see a proposed 2023 holiday schedule, kind of keeping in line with some of the discussions had previously in a work session. This is something that I would add. Basically, keep our existing holidays that we've historically seen. Add the Juneteenth, Independence Day holiday on June 19th, which obviously was adopted by the federal government, I believe, two years ago. And then Columbus Day on the 9th. And then still the two days, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Did note options if the governing body wants to maintain basically the 11 recognized or the 11 paid holidays. I do know from staff that work in the office, we could basically on those two days for Thanksgiving or Christmas, just note those as days that city facilities are closed. And ask that, you know, staff have the option to use vacation to fill that time. It's very similar to how we treat Veterans Day as the mandatory in-service day going forward. That being said, obviously, it's, you know, a greater, a benefit that we can tout as an employer to offer them as full paid holidays, but I obviously know that people have strong feelings sometimes on that. These basically, all with the exception of the floating holiday, correspond with those federally recognized holidays where banks are closed. I will tell you anecdotally, most of the time, like when we've been open on Columbus Day, it's pretty dead. Most people expect us to be closed on those days because the banks are closed or other government offices, you know, post offices, et cetera, are closed. So this is proposed, and just open it up for your all discussion, so we can get that pushed out to employees.
I would be in favor of giving the extra day off over both Thanksgiving and Christmas. I think that'd be pretty common in most businesses.
So you're saying add two, two days?
I mean, people aren't going to work on Black Friday anyways, so just give it, give it.
I mean, Juneteenth and Columbus Day, no one ever, not too many people take that off anyway. Those aren't recognized very, I mean, widely recognized.
So you're gonna swap those two?
I mean, I like the floating idea, but. You know.
Well, the Juneteenth. That's the only one that I somewhat have an issue with, but not even very strong.
So what if we would swap Juneteenth and Columbus Day for the extra two days over Thanksgiving and Christmas?
I think that would be, I, I mean, personally, I would enjoy that if I had had those two days at that, those two times.
I mean, Christmas, if it's falling on a Monday, people are going to be traveling. We don't want to, that's going to be an inconvenience for people if they have to be back at 8:00 AM. Just give them the extra time.
I don't see the city losing out on anything if they did have the days off, because more time with your family, that's better balance in life.
It's a good thing for our employees.
Yeah.
I'd say, and the only reason I support at least the offices being designated as being closed, even if, you know, the council would not, is the way our vacation policy is set up and, and we're not a very large employer, so vacation conflicts are decided by seniority. So basically, you have the, you know, it sets up if somebody always takes, and usually it's very popular for people to take vacation around holidays because it lessens how much their vacation draw is. The same person basically could get Christmas every year, and we don't really have a good remediation. Because as you're the oldest one in the department, you can take it first and you have the right, so. That's just, it lessens conflicts, you know, on the administrative office, and we're only dealing with four people, but. Sorry, the most senior, based on years of service.
So, so what is it now? You said it's 11 now, and you want, you want 13?
Yeah, so the, the schedule, if that would basically allow for 13 paid holidays. The two added, we do currently, or this year, we did take two days at Thanksgiving, two days at Christmas, did not observe Columbus or Juneteenth. Add those because, as noted, those are typically holidays that are traded. We are seeing more and more area governments start to recognize those days. And then either doing the same thing of closing still on that day after Thanksgiving and just saying it's up to you to use vacation if you want the time off, but you don't have to come to work. And then on Christmas, to Brody's point, we would need or want to structure that. It's just, we're also trying to update our personnel policies to kind of reflect, so I just wanted to throw the discussion out there before we formally amend our personnel policies to kind of, and it's fine, whatever you guys decide. I just want to make sure that that's reflected going forward, because following the pandemic and, and as we kind of tried our first year in 2022 of doing this, two observed days at Christmas, it's very popular with the staff. We just want to make sure, one, we're going to have to, you know, say that it can alternate between the 24th or 26th because when Christmas is on a Friday and 26th is on a Saturday, again, our policies would actually dictate that a holiday on a Saturday is observed on a Friday, but Friday is already a holiday. So we either, you know, push it, so this just allows staff to have a little more leeway in getting those assigned.
I think if we're doing this, we need to pay the employees and not make them take vacation or pay time off. I mean, if, if we're going to sit here and say that our offices aren't going to be closed, but if you want to get paid for it, you got to take vacation, that doesn't sit right.
Yeah, you already have a floating holiday, and you have two other kind of non-holidays. Why don't you just move those to the days we're trying to fill? That's my suggestion.
I'm, I'm good with that. So scratch the floating holiday and then Juneteenth?
Or, yeah, or Columbus Day.
I would imagine, and Julie can probably chime in based on her or any of the assembled staff here tonight, but if they had to pick two to keep that 11 paid holidays, I imagine they would want to see Columbus Day and Juneteenth probably as the holidays that are.
You know, you could, you could also make, you know, you could have three floating holidays, and if someone felt strongly about Juneteenth, that's when they can take their vacation. But they have to know that they won't get it on December 26th.
That's a good point. Good, yeah.
Yeah, speaking, when everybody else is closed and we're open, it makes it really, really boring in here. I mean, it really does. When the bank and post officer are closed, they assume. I mean, I watch the news getting ready for work in the morning, and they say, all government facilities are closed today. Well, we aren't, and so it's just.
You should just give me a call. I may have the time to come down.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, I think Josh's suggestion to have three floaters is probably a good way to go. That would work for you, Julie?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be, yeah, definitely to try for a year, maybe.
To clarify, so that it is going up to 13 paid then, or not? I guess I just.
That's what I said, would you go up?
Of whether we keep the 11 or, or the 13, because yeah, there's 13 calendar days.
And council, here's, here's something I want to bring up. One of the reasons Ethan is looking at this, is we try to reach out and hire new employees. We got to start separating ourselves and making our, our package look a little more attractive.
Right.
So that would be something to consider.
I, I think 13 paid holidays.
I keep, I mean, but you guys keep saying that. Is that working?
Well, I don't know.
I mean.
It's, I mean, it's one thing, other, and I don't.
It seems like every time we up our game in the county and, and other cities up their game too, and it's kind of a domino effect. How many open positions do we have currently, Ethan?
Technically, three on the full-time side. And say to, I mean, you kind of see across the board, and I know, you know, maybe calling them holidays to, to Josh's point. I mean, some cities give the 11 paid holidays plus, you know, two, we would call them floating holidays, but two personal days per year that don't count as vacation or sick. I know of one city that actually gives all employees their birthday off with pay. So, I mean, it's, there's really no wrong or right. It's what you all feel is, feel is appropriate. I, I, the staff are always appreciative of any paid day off, and then obviously for our shift workers, not, not as a big of a deal to them because of, you know, they have more days off in a month. But I do know that they enjoy the, you know, holiday differential on those days that they work holidays. So there is benefit to them as well, this mostly as far as what day the offices are closed affect public works and administrative staff.
So we can set this up as 11 paid holidays with two additional personal days, and then the employees can pick whenever they want to use them. That work, Josh?
It's up to, yeah, everybody else.
Well, the, he brought up a point that I, you know, I lose sight of from time to time. It's like, we try to make these concessions to make employment here more attractive, and as you said, as we do that, other communities continue upping, upping the ganty, so to speak. How would, do we want to call this out as 11 holidays and two floating holidays?
I said three floating holidays.
Three, I'm sorry, three.
Yeah.
I would say probably three floating holidays. Because there is benefit, I think, and again, I have four department heads here. But I would think the benefit here, as opposed to just the two random personal days, is obviously it's scheduled and adds consistency of knowing that this is everybody's day off, as opposed to like a personal day where suddenly somebody could just walk in and do his off and be like, I'm taking my personal day tomorrow. You know, because I'm entitled to it, but I, I think, again, either one is, obviously in addition to the current benefit to employees and.
We can handle that SOP if we call it a personal day by saying you have to have your request in two weeks prior to or something, too.
But then there's the matter of tracking it as well. And us in the office.
You won't have a problem with that.
I, yeah.
I'm, I'm down for whatever works the best for everybody.
Well, how do you track the current floating holiday?
Uh, it's assigned across the board by, it's my discretion. We usually talk with staff during our annual staff meeting.
All take it on the same day? Gotcha.
Basically, typically, it, it was originally started to try and coincide, or, you know, like when the fourth would be on a Tuesday to try and give, you know, four-day weekends to an employee. So usually it's always been spent around either Christmas or, excuse me, Christmas or the fourth, the floating holiday, though often, as you can see, a lot of employees like having it in April around the Good Friday holiday, just because it breaks up kind of that spell between Presidents' Day and Memorial Day.
President's Day, too. That's a lot, a lot of holidays that most people don't get. I'm just, that's, that's my issue, so. And then you're asking for two more.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I don't care.
Well. This is, this is morphed many times since we've been talking here. So what a motion to the effect of motion to approve proposed holiday schedule as per has been revised during this meeting, it's how we want this to read.
Oh, you can just keep it how it's written here.
Okay, so you'd make the effective changes as we've discussed. Okay, consensus or motion to proceed with proposed 2023 holiday schedule and update to personal policies, personnel policies and guidelines for the city of Halsted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the 2023 holiday schedule. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Aye.
That passes. Next, we have to reschedule December 26th city council meeting. Guess nobody wants to come in the day after Christmas.
Say the, to the holiday schedule, the 2022 holiday schedule calls for December 26th and December 27th for offices to be closed. Obviously, if the council wants to have their meeting on their regular Monday night, we will come in and make that happen. If you want to move it, I would suggest either the night of the 27th, since we'll all be back in bright-eyed for December 28th, or the evening of December 28th or 29th, to keep it in that weekend before year end.
Do you want to do the 28th? Would that give you enough time to get everything? That, that gives you a day.
Let me ask you this. Can we just skip that one since it's the last one of the year? It's an honest question.
We're not having any election changes. You'll still have end-of-year expenditures that have to be approved at the first meeting in December. The big thing that we would need or want to get done before December 31st is that boundary resolution, unfortunately. So we can get that in to the county, because I believe that's required to be done before the 31st, if I'm not wrong.
Well, that settles that.
In theory.
You know, uh-oh.
Most cities don't.
Brad's throwing some gray area, I know.
There's so many of them that forget to do it. I mean, it's, that's what it says, that you should annually do that, particularly if there's a change. However, I will be the first to admit, a lot of cities don't get it done. But, you know, you, but the short form answer to your question is yes.
Yeah, and that, that's my point, is if there's not going to be a big agenda that night, we could probably forego that meeting so everybody can spend more time with their families. But that's up to the council, just my suggestion.
I won't be in town, so it won't matter to me.
I'd say, and that's the other is.
So we run the risk of not having a quorum anyway.
Would a special meeting be an option, just calling it just for that?
I would say. We could call a special meeting, I mean, just for that boundary. If we get that published this week, I don't, I mean, we could try and get that special meeting done sometime next week, the 19th through the 22nd, I'll say.
And I'm out of here on the 22nd.
It would be about a five, 10-minute meeting at most, because minutes, bills and payroll, that can be postponed. So we can try and determine a quorum that week, if necessary, just to do that boundary, to keep us compliant with.
Yeah, I'm leaving early in the morning on the 22nd.
So we need to do it either Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. And I'm good any of those days, council.
I vote too.
I vote the 21st. Wednesday, there's no ballgame on Wednesday.
We'll make.
Any motion for that?
Do we call it a replacement date or a special meeting?
We call it a replacement date.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we'll have other business besides, as long as we're here, won't we?
Yeah, we probably won't do any other business besides just that one item, so. We can call to, I'd say, make a motion to cancel the regular meeting on December 26th and.
Reschedule it for.
Reschedule it for December 21st. We can meet at whatever time you guys want to, after 5:00.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a, a motion to cancel the December 26th meeting and reschedule it. meeting and reschedule it for December twenty-first at seven P M.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to move the December twenty-sixth meeting to, uh, the twenty-first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That takes care of that rascal. Now, we have check number one-one-nine-seven-zero-seven, Halsted Floral at the Plaza. And for the public, we're, we call this individual checkout since, uh, we have Councilman Lanahan here that owns the flower shop, so just to be transparent on, on any expenses that go to a business owner that's a governing body member.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve check number one-one-nine-seven-zero-seven to Halsted Floral at the Plaza for seventy dollars and approve ordinance number, uh, twenty-twenty-two A P two-three A.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve, uh, this check to Halsted Floral at the Plaza and the ordinance that's attached to it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That passes. Next item up is, uh, Cedar Meadows Second Powers and First Edition Financing Options. This sounds like a mouthful for Ethan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so basically, just need to discuss the desired, uh, option that you all want to take. Uh, as you know, we have the sewer and water bid, uh, with Meese that was approved. Um, cause obviously this development is part of special assessments, and for those that aren't, uh, familiar with that process, basically the city issues temporary notes and then later converts that into, uh, general obligation bonds for debt service. Uh, normally, we would have expected, uh, that we would already be out to bid. You have firm prices for, um, we know we have it now for the water and sewer and had to amend because they were too low. Uh, we got hesitant to go ahead and issue based on the authorization, uh, without having the street bids, just because of what we saw with water and sewer. Um, however, we're kind of running into a dilemma of, uh, you know, the sewer contracts started, or they're scheduled to start their work mid-January, uh, so most likely we'll start seeing invoices for payment. Uh, by the end of January, it takes, uh, anywhere from thirty to sixty-day window to get those temp notes issued. Uh, we do have the option, we can issue the temp notes based on, uh, the ord- authorizing ordinances and work ordinances we passed. Um, and just hope that when those, the street work goes out to bid, and right now we're waiting on permitting still from, uh, the core and one state agency before we can take those out to bid with the engineer. Um, we're waiting on that information to make sure that those are, are sound dollar amounts. Uh, if it would for some reason go over, we're obviously gonna have some, some hoops to jump through. Uh, it is possible. Uh, a little bit complicated, uh, not, not the first option of our bond counsel or our financial advisor, if we can avoid it. Uh, we have the option to also pay, um, for anything that is some, applicable to those benefit districts or the temporary note financing. We can pay it from existing city funds that we have on hand, uh, and then reimburse ourselves. Um, I, I believe this is an option for what we anticipate seeing. Obviously, the, the risks, if you will, there is, you know, if we take money out of the water sewer reserve to pay for those costs, um, and then would have be some sort of catastrophic issue, uh, that money is obviously tied up. Uh, a benefit though is the city actually can, um, charge uh, interest or, you know, an administrative fee for loaning the money, uh, so that we're not, say, uh, usually it's gonna at least replace the interest we would have made on that money sitting in the bank. Um, so that is an option. Uh, it requires a bit more, uh, oversight and, and documentation on our part to make sure to be able to clearly show what was related to the developments, um, and make sure those costs are, are reimbursed appropriately. Uh, the other option we have is we can basically, uh, contact the contractor, uh, for water and sewer work and say, you know, we don't have our temp note financing in place. We don't know exactly when we're gonna have it in place, because we're waiting to go out to bid formally on the streets and ask them to delay. Uh, did talk to, to Harland. Uh, still, he doesn't have a good timeline because we are in those permitting, uh, and he's not getting good even estimated timeframes from those departments on when we might have it. Everything's been applied for, we're just waiting for those formal notices to proceed. Um, he is understanding on any of the invoices he submitted. Uh, if he has to wait, he said he's okay with that. He did get a little nervous though of, you know, throwing a wrench in the contractor's plan. Um, uh, the city does have adequate water and sewer reserves to handle the anticipated work, uh, that's supposed to be done. Um, so I do, I do think we have the option, uh, to pay them out of existing city funds, uh, to, to keep that work at least gone. I would feel better if we could formally go out to streets, because I'm just nervous with what we saw, if the material costs are more than anticipated, or you know, that and that street work ends up, uh, it sounds like, you know, we're gonna have a lot more amending to do to basically reauthorize, and the thing you absolutely don't want to happen or is for us to issue temporary notes and then find out we need another hundred thousand after we've already issued the notes, so. Um, just kinda need some direction.
If we took care of this, uh, with city funds on hand, until we get this, everything done on the streets, so we can go out for our temporary notes at that time. Uh, is this gonna require any kind of a budget amendment?
No, because these are all unbudgeted funds, so.
Okay, then what about our Canute's and Monroe audit we do every year? Obviously, it's gonna show up in an audit.
Yeah.
And how, how will they address that?
They will just, that's where the extra documentation will come in, where we're gonna have to make sure we kind of do, um, a very diligent, which we do anyway, because these do get transferred into long-term debt, um, from the temporary notes. It's just, normally it's, it's a little simpler if we set up a temp note fund and then just start assigning costs specifically to that fund, and this case, we're gonna pay them out of one fund. And then, you know, say the, the Meese work costs a hundred and fifty, we pay that out of the water sewer reserve, and then when we issue the one-point-six million in temporary notes, we'd immediately take a hundred and fifty thousand out of that, put it back in our water and sewer reserve fund, plus any fee if we choose to charge that, and say, you know, we loaned money to the development, basically temporarily, and we've now paid ourselves back, and then the temp note, in theory, is drawn down what it would have been had it been in place.
Council, is this something that is, uh, done, uh, frequently, where cities will upfront?
If they've got the wherewithal to do that, and it works well for them, for example, if, uh, um, rates are going down, and they prefer to wait three months to go ahead and do the temp notes, I've seen it done a number of different ways for different reasons. As long as we keep an audit trail in place that, uh, specifically notes that, and we've got the minutes that reflect the discussion, and that, that was authorized to be done that way, I don't know of any problem with that. In the past history where it's been done, I've never seen it be a problem.
And I don't have, I, I don't, I don't have any concern of staff keeping that paper trail. It was just, my concern was on, on the other end of the auditor's end.
Yeah, I've never had them. If anything, they may make a special note, uh, to the audit, just indicating that it is clearly established that this was done as follows. Um, and it was an authorized, uh, uh, process with reimbursement contemplated.
My guess is there's probably not a lot of cities our size that have the capital on hand.
That's exactly what I was thinking. I mean, we are incredibly fortunate to have those resources.
So, and I think, you know, you're talking short-term exposure, three months maybe. Uh, to me, it probably makes sense to go ahead and do it that way, since our exposure is very limited anyway.
I'd say the big there are the, the thing, and, and, well, obviously, as we do our, uh, periodic financial reports to y'all, and we'll note it, is we did have the, the Ninth and Walnut Water and Sewer Work, which was also planning to come out of reserves, so the reserves still have more than enough funds to absorb both projects.
Good.
It just will draw it down more than we originally anticipated when having those discussions with you all. But to the mayor's point, I am hopeful that we will not be in, uh, the unknown of permitting for much longer, and then I know Harland, uh, is ready to get those to bid as soon as we know the state's not gonna come in and shut us down because we don't have proper permitting.
So, do you need a consensus or a motion on how to proceed? What do you want?
Uh, I think, uh, motion, uh, just clarifying that we're okay with paying any, uh, received development cost for the Cedar Power Second Powers First Edition and Main Street Extension Project out of, uh, the city's available capital funds. Should be sufficient.
See, I don't have a problem with that. I, how to, I'd like to know how others feel before I make the.
As long as it's not gonna delay Ninth and Walnut. You know, I'm, I'm good with that.
No, and that's my fear, if we would ask Meese to delay the benefit district work in the development, is since they were trying to do that project with Ninth and Walnut kinda back-to-back, is it will delay Ninth and Walnut if we say, hey, we're kinda nervous about paying you.
This is actually gonna be beneficial and, and will help not delay that project.
And this will be, the dollar amount is what, a hundred and fifty?
We don't know.
Yeah, it's like a hundred and ten for Ninth and Walnut, and then the.
We won't be paying interest on. And that's a hundred and ten that the city won't pay interest on, but we might be able to garner a little bit of interest from that loan also, though.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna be a big nut, but it'll, it'll, it's something.
Better than it has been.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion, uh, to direct staff regarding the issuance of temporary financing notes to draw from cities, um, available. Available funds. And, um, move forward.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to utilize city funds to pay for construction costs until temporary notes can be secured. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That passes. We're gonna move around the executive session section and go straight to reports for the request at the, at the beginning of the meeting. So we'll start with governing body comments. Tonight, I'll start with you first, Derek.
Uh, no comments here.
Josh?
No.
George?
Well, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and, um, happy holidays.
Brody?
Uh, no comments tonight.
I'm gonna echo George and wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. It's coming up. I've been driving around town a little bit, looking at the holiday decorations. That's always nice to see, and my wife even made me put some of ours up, although I didn't put them all up, so. That's, that's it for me. We'll move on to, uh, Ethan for the manager report.
Hmm, thank you. I will send out the formal, uh, departmental updates and reports to you all. I apologize if it's not done. Some of the reasons why, uh, we're a little bit behind will be discussed in some of the sessions that we're going to have. I will just note that the Rees Across America ceremony, uh, that the council authorized the Halsted Cemetery, uh, to participate in will be the Saturday, December seventeenth at eleven. Uh, it's, uh, three hundred Rees, uh, should, to honor the veterans buried there. And it is open to the public. Everyone's welcome to attend, and then I just wanna thank the Chamber of Commerce, uh, for the Christmas jingle. And, um, it looked like a great event for downtown and, and heard a lot of positive feedback from that, so just thank the Chamber on that annual event. That's kind of neat for our downtown area, and that is all I have this evening beyond what I will send out to you.
Anyone have any questions of Ethan's report? If not, we'll jump back up to our executive session, uh, section. And we have two on the agenda tonight. The first one is a non-elected personnel one, and I would entertain the, uh, motion for that now.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if we can.
Oh, yeah, we were gonna, we're gonna do the attorney-client first. That's not so Brad can leave early, is it?
Apparently.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, moved at the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending contract negotiations pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception K S A seven-five-four-three-one-nine B two, and asked that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chambers at eight-thirty P M.
Second. Have the motion and the second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We are in executive session. We'll move to the other room.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result though? Seeing no movement from the council, I would accept the motion for the next executive session. As soon as Ethan is done formulating it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Hall State City Council recess into executive session to discuss performance of an employee and maintain privacy rights pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel, exception KSA 754319B1, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session: the city manager and city attorney; the open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chambers at 8:55pm.
Second. Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post team sign. We are in executive session. We'll move back to the room. Pose same sign. We are in executive session. We'll move back to the room. We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result? Hearing nothing from the council, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We will be adjourned as soon as everybody finishes signing these documents.